So, a couple of key to order. I'd like to welcome everyone today, our newly elected and those returning members of council, honored guests and deaf family members. So, we'll start with the moment of silent reflection today. So, if you could ask me to stand? If we can start with the roll call. Counselor Bennett?
Yes.
Counselor Rose?
Here.
Counselor Doncaster? Counselor, uh, Donio?
For, for the West.
Counselor Emo?
Present.
Counselor Grills?
Here.
Counselor Hunt?
Present.
Counselor Callard?
Here.
Counselor Love?
Present.
Counselor Lynch?
Here.
Counselor Murphy?
Here.
Counselor Peckett?
Present.
Counselor Regge?
Present.
Counselor Reinwald?
Present.
Counselor Robinson?
Present.
Counselor Sweet?
Present.
Counselor Bisneski Moore?
That's for last, yes.
Next on the agenda, I'll offer any disclosure of opportunity, interest or general nature thereof. Seeing that, I'll move on to the next item, correspondence. All correspondence with the exception of one item has been referred to committee. The one item we have is a thank you card for Mr. Steve Boland, and I'd like to read that up. Dear Members of Council, thank you very much for the wonderful retirement send-off that you have afforded me. The photo collage is fantastic. Who knew there were so many faces to Steve Boland? Thank you as well for all the support and encouragement provided over the years, even though questions were very good to help keep me on, on my game. It has been my sincere privilege to have served you and the residents of the County of Renfrew over the years. Best wishes for the future, regards, Steve Boland. Then for the next item, the oath of office, I will ask you to stand. So, you can have the oath of office in front of you. We'd like to try to recite this simultaneously. I do have in my pocket here a second oath of office that has been provided to us by the Ministry of Municipal Affairs for those or anyone wishing not to swear allegiance to the Queen. And so, if you want that, I can provide that as well. Otherwise, we'll start with the oath. So, can I just fill in the blanks as we go along here? Okay? So, as a member of the Council of the County of Renfrew, I solemnly promise that on behalf of the County of Renfrew, I faithfully, faithfully, and passionately exercise my powers and professional knowledge and ability. I honestly see and will honestly see and believe in your word or promises that are presented in the exercise of the citizens of my eyes throughout for any injury or harm that may occur. I will disclose any inferiority or disrespect in regard to the persons who are involved in this law and policy act. I will be faithful to their true allegiance to Her Majesty's wills and decrees, or whatever it is called, for the time being. And I solemnly promise that my declaration, my intention, and my commitment to the country of Canada, and the United States, and the world, and the state of the nation, from the packets of paper and paper. Thank you. So, I'll ask you to please be seated, sign the declarations, and I'd like to start with welcoming and congratulating the new county council for the County of Renfrew. Next order of business? Next order of business is the election of ward pursuant to section 17 of the County of Renfrew procedural bylaw as amended. I, the clerk, as the acting presiding officer, have called for nominations for warden for the ensuing year that was, that were filed with the clerk of the County of Renfrew by the deadline for nominations of December 4th. We have received two nominations, and we're going to start the process in alphabetical order. So, we will start with the mover and seconder, and I'd ask them to come forward for Jennifer, Counselor Jennifer Murphy. So, the mover, Jed Reinwald, and the seconder, Mayor Sweet, please come forward.
Oh, good morning, everyone. County council, county staff, and members of the public. Can you hear me? What's wrong?
It's not working, no.
Can I speak louder?
General Tom, Mike.
Let me speak a little louder. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Test one, too. I'm live and well. You'll have to excuse me, I had a bit of a, picked up a cold this weekend, so I'll try to make it through here without any sneezes or sniffles. So, I was recently approached by Jennifer Murphy and Tom Peckett about supporting them for warden position for 2019. And after further discussions with each of them independently, they got me to think back to 2015 inaugural session here at the county. At that particular time, 12 of the 17 members sitting on county council were new to these chambers, and I felt that further changes would be counterproductive to the operation of the council. As a result, council decided to reelect the previous warden at that time. But it did not completely come clear to me until I broke things down into more simplistic terms. So, I, for the most part, am a fairly simple person. So, for today, as I did three years ago, I imagined these council chambers as being part of a large ship with the warden being the captain, the 16 councillors being the oarspeople, and the staff being the officers. I must also note that there's almost, there's over 800 employees here at the County of Renfrew. So, out of the 16 oarspeople, only four had long-term experience rowing this vessel, and they're quite clear in the direction they're heading with an experienced captain at the helm. Six of the other oarspeople now have four years' experience rowing this ship and are starting to work in unison with the senior crew. Six new crew members are joining the team today, and it'll be their first time to position their oars in the water. So, it'll take some time, some familiarization, to be with the team. As far as the officers on deck or our staff, we've had quite a change over the past couple of years. The Director of Social Services, retired Dave Anderson, two years ago. So, the Director of Development Property, Paul Morrow, transferred to that position. A new hire took place for the Director of Development Property, which was Greg Kelly. In September of this year, another retirement took place, leaving our CIO, Jim Hutton, position vacant. It was then filled by the Director of Social Services, Paul Morrow. You really get around, don't you? So, the Director of Social Service was then filled by a county manager of Ontario Works, Laura Lepine. Also in September of this year, another announcement was made that the Director of Public Works and Engineering, Steve Boland, would also be retired at the end of this calendar year. This position is currently being replaced by a very qualified external applicant, a gentleman by the name of Lee Perkins. So, in order to keep this ship on course and in unison, and understanding the strengths and limitations of each oarsperson, and working with the changing assignments of our officers, it'll require an experienced captain to take us through the next part of this journey until everyone is aligned. For these reasons, it is my belief that it is so important that we continue with Captain Jennifer Murphy as warden for another year until we are completely aligned. Thank you.
There you go. Thank you, Rose. Need anything fixed, ask a lady. Absolutely. Mr. CIO, when I look around at the various mayors that are with us today, I see the foundation builder, or one of the foundation builders, sitting at the back, past warden. Art at the back there, great to see you here again, Art Jamison, thank you for being part of today. Colonel LaPointe, and Mr. Werner, it's great to have you with us this morning, ladies and gentlemen, and of course, members of county council. It is a pleasure that I second the motion for my colleague, Mayor Reinwald, for your consideration of Mayor Jennifer Murphy for the position of warden for the County of Renfrew. I think it's fair to say that 2018 has been a year of elections. Change in the US primaries, which is affecting us here in Canada and Ontario, a change in Ontario, provincial leadership going progressive, conservative with under the helm of Doug Ford, and then, of course, just recently, our own change at the municipal level. Changes are constant in our political environment. The ability to manage and navigate the evolving landscape is of critical importance. Mayor Jennifer Murphy has demonstrated her ability to adapt to this change, displaying qualities of leadership and knowledge with her eight years as an elected head of council for Bonnershire Valley, two terms as warden at the County of Renfrew, and a broad and varied background in the private business sector. During this time, Mayor Murphy has accomplished much in her passionate advocacy of the Ottawa Valley. Mayor Murphy's ability to work and create partnerships with all levels of senior government has been exceptional. She has led county council impartially and established harmony amongst the 17 municipalities, the city of Pembroke, and the greater Renfrew County family. It is with full confidence that I support Mayor Murphy in another term as warden of the County of Renfrew.
Thank you.
Good morning. Is that better?
Yeah.
Okay. I am very pleased to be here this morning, surrounded by family, fellow county councillors, friends, distinguished guests, county staff, and our media. I wish to thank my mover, Counselor Jed Reinwald, and my seconder, Counselor and former warden, Bob Sweet, for their kind words. Last year, I stood right here and I spoke about change. However, I don't think any of us could have seen the numerous changes we saw in 2018. From the provincial election, internal retirements, including our CIO, recruiting for those positions, and the municipal election, it has been a year of constant change. There are many reasons that I would like to continue serving as your warden for the coming year, but I feel that continuity in these chambers as we move into 2019 is extremely important. We have achieved a great many things and advanced numerous issues over the past year, but we must continue to advocate for Renfrew County at the provincial and federal levels to ensure that our issues are addressed from a rural perspective. I feel that I have forged relationships in both governments that will have a positive impact as we move forward in uncertain times. Over the past two years, I have had the opportunity to lobby both levels of government on the need for the expansion of Highway 17, reconstruction on Petawawa Boulevard, and the broadband and cell gap project. This year, I spoke with our new provincial government about the paramedic overflow delays, long-term care funding, the proposed fire medic project, and most recently, the official plan, just to name a few. For each of these lobbying efforts, I ensured that I did my research and attended meetings fully prepared and ready to present our best case. If reelected, I am eager to continue in these efforts, especially through the Eastern Ontario Wardens Caucus. If reelected today, it is my intention to run for the Chair of the Eastern Ontario Wardens Caucus. I was the vice chair in 2018 and feel that I can confidently take on this new role if given the opportunity. In the past, we saw the benefits to Renfrew County when former wardens Emo and Sweet held the chair position and therefore sat on the board of Emo. In an effort to grow our existing partnership with the Algonquins and Pidgawaknagun, a new ad hoc committee was created to formalize our commitment to working together. This partnership makes our community stronger, as does our relationships with the city of Pembroke, Canadian Nuclear Laboratories, and Garrison Petawawa. In these times of increasing financial pressures on municipal budgets, and with all the challenges that we face as a council, we will need to seek a unified approach to examine issues like shared services, expanded partnerships, and funding opportunities. I am fully prepared to discuss and debate ideas to assure that we continue to deliver excellent services while still being fiscally responsible. We also need to keep bringing in new ideas. In 2019, we will be hosting in partnership with the city of Pembroke, the Ontario Small Urban Municipal Conference. This is a perfect example of how we can bring people to our area and showcase the beauty and the assets of the County of Renfrew. I am excited to have the opportunity to work with Counselor Sweet on this project. Next year, we will be creating our new strategic plan. It is my expectation that we will have to be extra strategic and will have to find efficiencies throughout the corporation. We will also need to look at our long-term financial plan and how it fits into our limited budgets. I am ready to work diligently on both of these initiatives. We must also bring new people to our organization to make us the best we can be in terms of serving our community. I see succession planning as a critical need in 2019. I am ready to work with our CIO and our senior leadership team to ensure this occurs. I am excited to move forward with our new county council. I have no doubt that each of our members have come ready to roll up their sleeves and work as a team. Throughout this teamwork, we should realize exceptional service for our ratepayers. I am proud of my excellent working relationship with our MPP, Minister John Jakobusky, and our MP, Cheryl Galant. I would like to, I would look forward to continuing working with both of them as we bring issues of Renfrew County to senior government in an effective way. County council, in closing, I stand here before you today to ask for your support for the position of warden for the 2019 year.
Next, I'd like to call the nominator and, or the mover and seconder for Counselor Peckett. So, I'll call on Counselor Bisneski Moore and Counselor Doncaster.
Good morning, everyone. County councillors, honored guests, staff, ladies and gentlemen. I want to offer a welcome to our six new members, and I really do look forward to working with each and every one of you. I have been given the honor and privilege of nominating Tom Peckett, the mayor of McNabb Grayside, for a warden for the ensuing year. Tom is married to his wife Nancy, and they have been together for 30 years. They have three sons, Todd, Cory, and Trevor, and a daughter, Ashley, and they're proud grandparents to five grandchildren. Tom grew up in Carlton Place and lived in the Ottawa Valley for his entire life. He moved to Armpryor in 1969 to work as a police officer for 10 years. He spent his own time and money going to schools and teaching safety. He received an award from the Optimist Club for all of his volunteer work. He became a Lions Club member and a part of a team, and you're going to hear a lot about that from me, constructed a house, selling it and raising $35,000 to help in building the new Armpryor Library. He spent 10 years as owner of a Sears dealership store, taking sales from $400,000 to $1.2 million in 13 months. He became Armpryor Town Councilor in 2003 and stayed there until 2010. He chaired the Police Service Board. He then became mayor of McNabb Grayside in 2014. As mayor with his council, he accomplished much, and the voters gave him the honor and privilege by re-electing him for his commitment and for getting things done. Last year, he was appointed as deputy warden of Renfrew County of these chambers. He also chaired the operations committee for Renfrew County. Now, I've only touched on a few of Tom's accomplishments, but it shows to me, and I hope to you, his commitment for hard work and getting things done. I believe in teams. I don't believe in I. As part of a strong team, I know that Tom has shared his vision with all, each and every one of us. And I'll leave it to Tom to speak to those. Four years ago, the warden at the time decided to change the seating arrangements here at the county chambers. I was asked to sit in between two new councillors, Jed Reinwald and Tom Peckett. I became friends with both of these fine gentlemen. When Tom indicated to me that he would be seeking the warden's position if he won the local election, he asked for my support. Over the past four years, I watched Tom. I grew to respect him and his vision for Renfrew County. Again, my team. He quickly became part of the team here. And yes, all 17 of us are part of a team. We all work for the benefit of all the taxpayers and residents who make Renfrew County their home. Tom was quick to understand how things work and had no problem making tough decisions that we often have to make here. Renfrew County has an excellent staff who are here to move our directions forward. Tom has excellent, strong leadership skills, and again, I'm sorry to repeat myself, but he's a strong team member, which are great assets to have for this position. I was the warden for two years, and I know what this job entails. And I believe strongly in being part of a team, each and every one of us. And I know that Tom will work hard as the warden of Renfrew County, so please give him an opportunity to serve as our warden for the ensuing year. And again, thank you, Tom, for asking for my support. It truly is an honor and privilege. And county councillors, I ask that you consider supporting Tom in this election. Thank you very much.
I have to hold it back. Greetings to all. It is my pleasure to second the nomination of Tom Peckett for the position of warden for the County of Renfrew for 2019. The position of warden has evolved over time to what many would call in the past as a mainly ceremonial position, to a position now that is vital and important, and a full-time position that leads and guides this body forward. Whether here at county council, or at the Eastern Ontario Wardens Caucus, or at any of the regular meetings with ministers, it's important that the County of Renfrew has a strong and precise voice. In the past, I've held the, I've held the position, or the belief, that the position of warden for the County of Renfrew should be appointed on a two-year basis. This body, the previous county council has never really had any detailed discussions around that, however, I believe the two-year term is very valuable, and I maintain that position to today. Having said that, Warden Murphy has represented the county and performed her duties as the warden admirably, and has done this for the past two years. I truly believe that after two years, there's a great deal of value in having another member of this county council take on the role of warden. I've had the honor of working with Tom Peckett here at the county table for the past four years. I have always found Tom to be very conscientious and detail-oriented. Tom comes to the meetings having read all the information in advance and is prepared for the meetings. He's never afraid to take on issues, nor asks tough questions. Tom's dedication to public service is impressive and spans more than 30 years. From youth sports, sports to various service clubs, Tom has dedicated his time to serving others. Supported by his wife Nancy and his four children, Cory, Todd, Trevor, and Ashley, Tom continues to contribute to our community, the County of Renfrew, as an elected official. I believe that Tom Peckett to be qualified and capable to be the next warden of the County of Renfrew.
Good morning, everyone, and thank you for attending today. I really want to thank my mover Janice Visneski Moore and my secondor councillor Glenn Doncaster. Their words of encouragement mean a lot to me, so thank you to both of you. You will find that my speech is going to be a little bit different than normal. I think a lot of the things in the council here have already been talked about and people sitting around this table understand the direction that Renfrew County needs to go. So when I first came to the county here four, four years ago, I wasn't sure what to expect. I quickly found out that I was not alone and there were 11 other new councillors here. It did not take long before the remaining councillors and the staff made me feel part of the team as well as the other new members. I previously sent an email to you outlining many of my viewpoints for county council, so I will only touch briefly on a few, and then I will share some of the lessons I have learned over the years. In the years ahead, Renfrew County Council has, has to deal with many issues, including the extension of Highway 417, the expansion of Petawawa Boulevard, both critical items that need to be addressed by the next council, replacement and additional social housing units to meet growing demand. Our, our population is aging, we're living longer, and the county's supply of, of social housing is getting worn out, getting well-used, and we're short units, so we need to really look at, at how to step up our game in, in that area. There's ever-increasing need for healthcare changes and costs. I think everyone here understands that, with our paramedic service and everything, it's, it's just critical that, that this coun, county council moves forward with that. There's the ever-increasing need for, I'm sorry, the Ossom Conference and the Algonquin Trail at our, are things that, that are on this council's plate and are important not only for healthcare and activity, but economic development, especially the Algonquin Trail. The official plan, the strategic plan, and of course, the budget are, are all important items for us to consider. I do listen to and respect everyone's point of view. Each of you has strengths and weaknesses. I intend to take advantage of your strengths. For example, why would I, with no experience being a farmer or a forester, not involve a member of council knowledgeable in agriculture and/or forestry in meeting with bureaucrats? You'll say I've already started involving others should the striking committee agree with my suggestions. Currently, we have a county council liaison, city liaison committee. I propose to expand and/or create a new committee to have more involvement on a regular basis with our members of parliament, both federal and provincial, Garrison Petawawa, the Algonquins of Renfrew County and others. I've been hearing that many residents do not understand all that Renfrew County does for their communities, and I was one of those folks until I arrived here. I would like to change our approach of waiting for municipalities to ask the county to come to their communities. I want to be proactive by reaching out to all the municipalities and making presentations in areas of interest to them, which would include staff and county council members. Renfrew County needs to promote itself and this can only be done with help from the councillors at this table. Recently, there has been a lot said about continuity. In my opinion, continuity for Renfrew County is not achieved by one person. Continuity for the county is the message that has been formulated and agreed upon by the members of this council. It is a huge commitment to serve as warden, and each of you, by virtue of being elected to serve your community, qualifies you to be warden. At the very least, you deserve the opportunity to serve, should you so desire. Two years ago, a suggestion was put forward that anyone, if elected to the warden's chair twice in a row, should serve for the two years and then step down and give others a chance to become warden. I am in favour of that suggestion for reasons stated earlier. I understand in, in Ontario, the County of Lynott replaces their warden every year, no matter what, and the County of Huron has a two-year policy for their county. So it's not, it's not really a new idea, it's, it's out there. As you can tell, I've been around the track more than once. A good day for me is when I learn something new each day, so I'm going to relate to you a few of the lessons I have learned over the years. My dad was the Reeve of Carlton Place. And when I was very young, I remember him having some heated discussions on the phone. That's back in the day when the phone was attached to the wall and you couldn't walk into another room, so you overheard a lot of conversations. The discussions were about the repaving at that time of the main street in Carlton Place. And my dad was insisting that when they were going to do this, they need to do the sewer and water lines at the same time, and he was meeting with some opposition to that. Well, my dad fought hard for, for his position and the result was that in Carlton Place, they, they did the sewer and water and the paving all at the same time, thus saving themselves a lot of money. The lesson I learned, if you're going to do something, do it right the first time. Back in the 70s, I was a police officer in Armpryor. The town council of the day made, made a decision trying to fix a traffic problem that was at the intersection of Madawaska Bridge and Daniel Street. The suggestion they made was put in, into place, and I was called upon one shift to go down there and direct traffic because it was a huge traffic problem. While I was there, a member of the Armpryor council at the time, Mr Henry Murdock, and his picture is out on the wall here, he was a former warden for Renfrew County, he came down and watched what was going on. And during the lull, he called me over and asked me if, if I thought that the decision that the council had made was working. And I honestly said, "No, sir, I, I really don't think it, it is working right." He took his knowledge of standing there and watching and plus my suggestion, he went back to county, town council and they fixed it. They revisited and they fixed it. So the lesson learned for that for me was never be afraid to admit you've made a mistake, just fix it. During my 33 years refereeing basketball, there was one official that could never pass the written exam which was held annually. Only thing was, you put that official on the floor and he was one of the best in the county. Lesson learned, not always is the person with all the plaques on the wall the best one suited for the job. In my own township recently, I took an elderly gentleman on a road trip throughout the township in all the areas that we had planned to change or revitalized or reconstruct. This took a fair bit of time, and I must tell you, this gentleman had already told, told me that in the 2014 election, he did not vote for me, but that didn't matter because he, he had wisdom beyond his years. Anyway, when I was leaving, dropping him off, he, he said to me, and I'll quote, "You know, Tom, all good ideas are only words until someone actually does something." Lesson learned, get the job done. No matter the outcome of the election, I will always strive to move the county forward. And you'll find that in, when I give speeches and stuff, something that I'm not really liking to do, you'll find that they'll be short, direct and to the point. So I will stop now, and in the words of George Clooney, and I think a couple of you have heard this one before, "I never really learn much listening to the sound of my own voice." Thank you for your consideration for me being a warden for 2019. Thank you.
Thank you to our two candidates. I'd like to move next to the election of warden, and I'll now ask Deputy Clerk to hand out the ballots. So in accordance with our procedural bylaw, I would ask each member to write the name of his or her selection on the ballot, fold the ballot into four and deposit the ballot in the ballot box provided.
I used to like you, sweetie.
I used to like you.
I could vote for you once.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for having counted the ballots. The ballot count is Councillor Peckett, seven, Councillor Murphy, ten. to the dodge. She's changed my life.
Now I'll ask the warden to take the, or Councillor Murphy, I guess at this point, to make the declaration of office. Congratulations.
Thank you. I, Jennifer Murphy, having been elected to the office of warden of the County of Renfrew, do solemnly promise and declare that I will truly faithfully and impartially exercise this office to the best of my knowledge and ability. I have not received and will not receive any payment or reward or promise thereof for the exercise of this office in a biased, corrupt or in any other improper manner. I will disclose any pecuniary interest, director indirect, in accordance with the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act. I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to Her Majesty Queen Elizabeth II, and I make this solemn promise and declaration conscientiously believing it to be true and knowing that it is the same force and effect as if made under oath.
Congratulations, Warden Murphy. So just to the next item, and the one item in our procedural bylaw that I will make note of, that any member of council does have the opportunity, before I ask for a motion to destroy the ballots, an opportunity to inspect the ballots, and so should any member of council wish to inspect the ballots, please identify yourself and we can make those available to you. Seeing none, I would ask for a motion to destroy the ballots. Councillor Visneski Moore, secondor, Councillor Sweet, all in favour? Thank you. Warden? See, now yours to take over, thank God.
Thank you, Paul. Yeah, I thought maybe we were using a chainsaw over there. Rose is cutting down a Christmas tree for us. Wow. Good morning again and welcome all of you again. I wish to thank again my mover, Councillor Jed Reinwald, and my secondor, Councillor Bob Sweet, as well as the confidence of county council for your continued confidence and support. Tom, I want to thank you for putting yourself forward as well. I know that we will continue to work closely together on this council and rest assured that your experience and input is always welcome. It means so much to me to have your support here in the gallery today. As I prepared for this third term as Warden, I took a long pause for reflection on what we have accomplished as a council, the challenges and success we have faced together, and I reaffirm my understanding that support of my family, friends, fellow councillors and staff have made for a more effective Warden, and I say thank you for all your trusted advice and support. Like I said earlier last year, I was here talking a lot about change, and yes, there certainly was just that, a lot of change. The provincial election, which has brought a new government at the province, we welcome new councillors here today as part of this council, our CAO, and the retirements of staff from key positions. This year will also no doubt bring us change again, but that's okay. We've got this. That's the thing about change. It's always there. But this year, the thing that doesn't change is our dedication to strong advocacy, our strong commitment to facing new challenges, and continuing to press forward for positive change on the issues that matter to us and our residents. Both councillors returning and those that are new will face it together. We shall continue to build upon our relationships with MPP Minister John Yakubowski and MP Cheryl Galant. I know, I know I and council appreciate all the efforts that bring the issues of Renfrew County to these levels of government. As I said earlier, issues like the official plan, Highway 17, budget planning, the Padawawa Boulevard project, the increased government support for long-term care, emergency services, infrastructure, and more, we cannot take our foot off the gas pedal. We will continue to lobby the senior levels of government on applying a rural lens when looking at the official plan and how it aligns with provincial policy statement. We need to continue the conversations we've had with government to ensure that a one-size-fits-all approach does inhibit growth and that the plan is reflective in our rural perspective. Highway 17, Padawawa Boulevard, I'm sort of repeating myself here, so I'll move on. We will work together as a council to make the best and most efficient decisions about municipal budgets. We will do this, always being aware of the challenges and uncertainty of the availability of senior government funding. We will tackle this with a unified approach and examine possible solutions like shared services, expanded partnerships, and a renewed focus on funding opportunities. We will also have to address the issue of paramedic offload delays and the funding models for our long-term care and social services to ensure that the most vulnerable in our society continue to receive the services they need and deserve. In 2019, we will continue with the partnerships outlined earlier. New ideas such as the OSUM Conference is just another great opportunity for the people of Renfrew County. Also in 2019, we will be crafting a new vision for the county and work together to build our new strategic plan that sets the goals and objectives for future in a responsible and efficient manner. Our CAO and staff will be asked for their best recommendations and their continued best in-service delivery. We will also look to new ideas and input from those that are joining the team this year in various roles resulting from succession planning, municipal administration program, and good hiring practices. I so look forward to being the voice of our county at the Eastern Ontario Wardens Caucus, and I truly feel that my role as vice chair this year has served me well. The advice I've received from past Chair Sweden Emo will serve me well as I pursue the position of Chair in 2019. The Eastern Ontario Regional Network continues to move forward by looking to close cellular gaps in service across our region, and we will be at the forefront in making our county more connected. I know that the committee chairs, their vice chairs, and all members of committee will continue to deliver effective solutions that will ensure that we are addressing the needs of our rate pairs. Remember that our families, our residents, and our own councils expect the very best from us, and in 2019, we will all serve them to the best of our ability. Ladies and gentlemen, friends and fellow councillors, it is my continued honor to begin my third term as Warden of the County of Renfrew. As we look forward to 2019, we will no doubt find ourselves party to many long conversations, debates, and tough decisions, yet I know that as a council, we will all do so in a professional manner and in an arena of mutual respect as we continue to make Renfrew County the best it can be. Before I wrap up, I thought I'd like to share a few pieces of our history. They say experience is learned from our history, so I thought I'd share some of them from 100 years ago in Renfrew County in 1918. In January of 1918, council had 35 members sitting in session, a session that lasted three days long. It included all the Reeves from each municipality and the deputy Reeves from Ermpryor, Pembroke, Renfrew, and McNab. Mr. James Martin from the township of Horton was the Warden. Council was seeking a grant to defray the expense of a provincial plowing match for the fall. The bridge over the Muskrat River, known as Foster's Bridge, was repaired by replanking a width of nine feet by three inches thick for a total cost of $11.87 plus the cost of hiring two men to do the work at a cost of $13. A special committee was asked to investigate the claim that the town of Renfrew with reference to overpaid levy for county purposes. The investigation determined that there was no foundation for any complaint and no error existed in the calculation of equalized assessment of the town of Renfrew for the years 1915, 16, and 17. The average salary paid to a male teacher was $1,800, and a female teacher was $620. The greatest problem in rural schools was the irregularity of attendance. The scarcity of help as home, on home and on the farm, had necessitated keeping home from school many of the older girls and boys. The total budget for the County of Renfrew in 1918 was $142,371.59. So we all just had a few chuckles, but some of it is true and a bit comical in our day and age, but my friends, we should always remember where we were then when we look forward to where we are going now. In 2019, always please remember to experience our history and share our future. To each and every one of you and your families, have a wonderful Christmas and a prosperous and joyous new year. Thank you.
Thank you, Warden. At this point, I would ask you to take your seat at the dais and assume control of the meeting.
Can I get my water?
Yes. We have water.
Oh.
At this time, it is my pleasure to welcome Mayor Walter Stock from the town of Redford.
Good morning, everyone. I have to tell you, this is kind of a weird feeling here. I just completed 12 years sitting, we're down a sitting in November, so kind of thing. Congratulations, Warden Murphy. Well deserved. Thank you. Congratulations to you, Tom, as well, for a fight well fought and putting yourself forward in a, I can relate to a tough loss. Good morning to all gathered this morning. The advantage of, for me here today is that I know the players and how it works here at the county, so first off, a little word of warning that you'll probably be hearing from me on a regular basis. To the six new, to the six new councillors joining council today, I wish you all the best. As you know, as you now have to share your focus and energy from just local concerns to include those of all of Renfrew County. To my colleague Counselor Dan Lynch, who now represents us from Ermpryor, I know he'll do a great job as he has demonstrated his commitment in Ermpryor for the past eight years. So I want to, I wish you all the success in this term, which will be one of change and constraint as a new provincial government brings forth its agenda. And I don't want to be a bearer of bad news, but I think all of us and all of our municipal responsibilities are going to have to be very cautious over the next couple of years in terms of the ability to get the most out of our tax base that we know is already pretty well maxed. So with that real positive note to all of you, a very Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. Thank you.
Will you bring down the party, Walter? At this time, it is my pleasure to introduce and ask to the podium the new mayor of the town of Deep River, Suzanne Dionne.
Thank you and good morning. Thanks for the invitation to say a few words, and congratulations to Warden Murphy and all of you, and my colleague Glenn Doncaster from Deep River, and all of you at the table today for representing your constituents. The county provides important support to all us lower-tier municipalities. Equally important to that support, the county is a united voice to higher levels of government. OSUM Conference in Pembroke being a good example, and standing united, even if we don't all have exactly the same issues, creates a stronger voice for all of us in crowded halls of Queen's Park. I moved to North Renfrew in 1986, and my friends thinking I was moving to the ends of the earth gave me a Deep River survival kit. But as our friends visited over time and they found Deep River and Renfrew County to have friendly people, beautiful scenery, and they could easily understand how I had forsaken Southern Ontario for small-town life. Now 32 years later, and in consultation with my family, I decided to give back to the community as well by running for mayor. So what message do I, as somewhat naive newly minted politician, what message do I bring to you? Well, I'm probably not that well positioned to speak to you, however, when someone comes in and they're new, they can bring fresh perspective. They might say fresh eyes. And my fresh eyes see what my visiting friends from Southern Ontario see, a beautiful county with a wonderful mix of towns and rural landscapes. As a cyclist and having traveled extensively, I can tell you that from a tourism perspective, this county has natural beauty and a character not found elsewhere. And I know that all cyclists appreciate the added feeling of safety that the paved shoulders installed by the county as they renew their road network they provide us with. But fresh eyes also see challenges. You know what they are. Expanding the 417 westward to provide a safer commute for residents and those passing through. Incentives for growth to stop the population drain from rural Ontario. Reliable high-speed internet to attract young families and the gig economy. And our small hospitals need our ongoing community support to ensure their survival. We all need to get together and be heard. My fresh eyes also want to bring to County Council's attention a concern that is rooted in Deep River but impacts all of us. Deep River is home to the county's second-largest employer, the Chalk River Nuclear Labs. CNL employs 2,800 people on a payroll of $250 million, employees who return to homes throughout Renfrew County at the end of their workday. The lab injects over $45 million into the supply chain of Renfrew County and each year engages numerous contractors. If we were courting a potential new employer who promised this level of economic growth for our county, we'd be bending over backwards to attract them to locate here. While CNL is here and needs our support with their near-surface disposal facility, we cannot be complacent. The NSDF is integral to CNL's operation and the future of site redevelopment for that property. It is designed to safely address the legacy liabilities at the site and to protect the environment, not to harm it. The NSDF is essential to the future of the lab. CNL has been transparent about the design and followed the environmental assessment process diligently, having held over 60 public engagements. It is very important to provide a venue for dissenting opinions, and there is a well-established EA process in place for legitimate technical concerns to be addressed to ensure an even better design. I can also give you my perspective, having worked at CNL for over 21 years. I personally have tremendous faith in the depth of skill and knowledge of the scientists, engineers, and technical staff working there. I also have faith in the EA process and the rigorous licensing process CNL must satisfy to meet the CNSU license requirements. Similar technology is already in place in Port Hope and Clarrington and several U.S. locations, and yet the design at CNL is even more robust. As a municipal council representing our citizens, we can be vocal about making sure this technical process is followed, but we need to be equally vocal about recognizing the day-to-day economic impact CNL has in each of our communities. This is a game-changer issue for CNL, and it needs our considerate support. If you have an opportunity, I understand CNL is planning to host elected officials at the lab in the new year, likely middle of February, so if you have a chance, please participate. So my message is, let's get together and be heard. Let's be heard on Highway 17. Let's be heard on rural growth, internet, and hospitals. And let's be heard on supporting our second-largest employer, CNL. I wish you all a wonderful holiday and all wealth and prosperity in the new year. Thank you again for having me speak. Thanks.
At this time, I would love to invite up Mayor Don Eding from the town of Renfrew.
Certainly a pleasure to be here this morning. I think this is my third or fourth time I've been here now. First of all, I'd like to congratulate Warden Murphy on her reelection. Very deserving, I believe. She's been around for a good many years, and it's an awful lot of experience going moving forward. Also like to congratulate Mayor Pickett. Just to put your name out there, it's not an easy thing to do, and I have to say, I certainly admire that, Tom. Also, congratulations to Steve Bullen, moving ahead within his retirement. I've had the pleasure of working with Steve for a number of years, when I was on county council, when I was mayor of Horton. Always had a lot of respect for Steve, and I certainly hope you enjoy your retirement. Certainly like to congratulate all county council members who got elected, new or old. Again, you put your name out there, as soon as you do that, you become a target, you're analyzed to death, et cetera. But I have to say, you've done it, you're here. This type of government, and I've known from serving here, is just a little different than your own at home, especially for the new members. County councillors represent the county, not just your home. It's really important when you get into this to remember that.
Thank you again for having me speak. Thanks.
At this time, I would love to invite up Mayor Don Eadie from the town of Renfrew.
Well, good morning, everyone. Certainly a pleasure to be here this morning. It's, I think this is my third or fourth time I've been here now. First of all, I'd like to congratulate Warden Murphy on her reelection. Very deserving, I believe. She's been around for a good many years and it's an awful lot of experience going moving forward. Also like to congratulate Mayor Peckett. Just to put your name out there is not an easy thing to do. And I have to say, I certainly admire that, Tom. Also, congratulations to Steve Bullen. Moving ahead within his retirement. I've had the pleasure of working with Steve for a number of years when I was on county council when I was mayor of Harton. Always had a lot of respect for Steve, and I certainly hope you enjoy your retirement. Certainly like to congratulate all county council members who got elected, new or old. Again, you put your name out there, as soon as you do that, you become a target. You're analyzed to death, et cetera. But I have to say, you've done it, you're here. This type of government, and I've known from serving here, is just a little different than your own at home, especially for the new members. County councillors represent the county, not just your home. It's really important when you get into this to remember that. I would like to say also that Renfrew, our town, is part of this team of 17 municipalities. I'm very fortunate to have Reeve Emo as our Reeve and on our council. Peter, if you don't mind me using your first name, Peter, has brought a great deal of experience to our council. Many times over the past four years, he has brought county issues to our municipality. I don't think there was ever once that we ever said no or wouldn't sign a resolution, et cetera. It's been a pleasure to work with Peter, it's been a pleasure to work with county council when I was here. So on behalf of the town of Renfrew, our staff and our council, and the people of the town of Renfrew, I'd like to wish everyone a very Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
At this time, let's welcome Mayor Mike Laney from the city of Pembroke.
Good morning. It's a pleasure to bring greetings from the city of Pembroke, the heart of the Ottawa Valley, to everyone assembled here. Congratulations, Mayor Murphy, on your reelection as warden. I'm really looking forward to continue working with you as we move forward in 2019. Congratulations, councillors new and returning, on your election to county council. I know the residents of Renfrew County will be well-served by the work you accomplished within these chambers. We have an excellent working relationship with you, and city councillors are looking forward to our joint city-county liaison committee meetings. Our continued collaboration over the next four years will benefit all city and county residents. Once again, congratulations, and I wish you the best for your tenure and your work ahead. And may the message of Christmas fill you with joy and peace, and best wishes to you and your families during the holiday season. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. I'm sure you've got other names for Peter in your own chamber. Or, Don, you probably have other names for Peter in your own chambers, haven't you? See, he's not paying attention, that's why I said it. At this time, it is my pleasure to introduce Colonel Louis LaPointe, Commander and Chief Warrant Officer Tom Werner from the Garrison Pirouala.
Warden Murphy, Member of Council, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for providing this opportunity to extend greetings from Garrison Pirouala. I would like to begin by congratulating Warden Murphy for her reelection as a warden of the county. I wish you the best of luck in your term of office. 2018 was a busy year for Garrison Pirouala soldiers. Two KM Machinized Brigade Group and other supporting units completed their commitment to Canada's I-Raideness Task Force for domestic and international operation. While at I-Raideness, Task Force Tamaok trained and prepared for four major deployments, two each to both Ukraine and Latvia, as well as to mission in the Middle East. Two KM Machinized Brigade Group currently has soldiers deployed to Latvia and Iraq, but most of, most will be back by February. Other Garrison Pirouala units are also contributing to operation with medical and special forces. Troops deployed to Iraq, and we have three Chinook helicopters deployed as part of the United Nations Multidimensional Integrated Stabilization Mission in Mali, commonly known as Minusma. Also, we consciously have many small contingents of troops deployed worldwide in different capacities. Although we're always busy training, starting late summer of 2019, the soldiers of 4th Canadian Division will be on the Road to I-Raideness once again. This period of AV training will last a year, with many training events in Pirouala and in the county, as well as some time away from home for weeks as part of their validation. In addition to the Road to I-Raideness training, this summer, we will send in flux of primary reserve soldiers that will converge on Pirouala to receive formalized, formative training. The training will culminate with a major training exercise for all of Ontario's primary reserve soldiers who are on full-time summer employment. The culmination of this, of this training in the summer of 2020 will take Task Force Tamaok to their I-Raideness phase, where they will once again be called to serve on major deployed operation overseas. As one of Canada's leading operational garrisons, with a workforce of 6,100 soldiers and about 900 civilians, maintaining and supporting this workforce and their families is my top priority. We are spending millions on quality-of-life projects over the next few years at Garrison Pirouala in order to help sustain and reinvest in the garrison and the well-being of those who work there. We have a number of large-scale projects underway that will contribute to the recapitalization and improvement of the garrison. Among the projects, starting next summer, we should begin to work on road access to the garrison in order to improve the flow of traffic. We are hoping to see this infrastructure project be realized in partnership with the county and the province. Also, I will continue to work on the access agreement for the extension of the Algonquin Trail Project to go through the garrison, and that will connect the trail from Pirouala to Laurent-Chanel. Finally, as newly-elected or re-elected mayors and Reeves across the county, you have the mandate to care for your citizens, like I do for our defence team and our families. Sometime, some people will call this a burden of command, but let them tell you, for our newly-elected officials here, that if you commit, you will never find a more rewarding job than the one of caring for our people. A wise man said, "The best way to find yourself is to lose yourself in the service of others." Warden, Members of Council, ladies and gentlemen, thank you for providing us the opportunity to speak. Chief Warrant Officer Werner and I are pleased to be here today and want to wish you all a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. Thank you very much.
Thank you, gentlemen, and thank you for your service. All right, so at this time, I'm going to announce the striking committee. This committee will meet in the Warden's Boardroom at noon. Lunch will be here at 11:30. I hope that all of our guests will stay and enjoy a meal. At this time, the striking committee... I have a wrestle, oh no, sorry. Striking committee is chaired by Michael Donahue. Members James Bros, Debbie Grills, Kim Love, Jennifer Murphy, Kathy Rieger, and John Reinwald. So everybody got that? Warden's Boardroom, noon? We're good? Okay. And at that time, we will, we will look over my proposed committee structure. Everybody, enjoy your break. Thank you. Good afternoon, everyone. Please be seated. I hope everyone, sorry, I hope everyone enjoyed their lunch. You now all have your cheat sheet of people on your desk. No excuse to not know each other's names now. And at this time, I would like to turn this over to councillor Donahue with the striking committee report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We, your striking committee, wish to recommend as follows. Moved by myself, committee, the following persons in the committees for the ensuing year, and the first person, name of each committee, wear bold, be the chair, and these established by bylaw as attached at this session. Striking committee, myself as chair, James Bros, Debbie Grills, Kim Love, Jennifer Murphy, Kathy Rieger, and John Reinwald. Vice-chair Kathy Rieger. Standing committees, finance and administration, Glenn Doncaster as chair, Michael Donahue, Peter Emo, Kim Love, Jennifer Murphy, Tom Peckett, Debbie Robinson, Robert Sweet, and vice-chair is Peter Emo. Operations, Tom Peckett as chair, David Bennett, Sheldon Keller, Daniel Lynch, Kathy Rieger, Ryan Hunt, Jennifer Murphy, vice-chair Sheldon Keller. Development, development and property, Robert Sweet, returning once more as chair, James Bros, Peter Emo, Sheldon Keller, Kathy Rieger, John Reinwald, Jennifer Murphy, vice-chair Peter Emo. Health, Kim Love as chair, David Bennett, Michael Donahue, Debbie Grills, Daniel Lynch, Jennifer Murphy, Janice Wizneski-Moore, vice-chair Janice Wizneski-Moore. Social services, Debbie Robinson, chair, James Bros, Glenn Doncaster, Debbie Grills, Ryan Hunt, Jennifer Murphy, John Reinwald, Janice Wizneski-Moore, vice-chair John Reinwald. For the Abhock Committee appointments, the Algonquin Trail Advisory Committee, Robert Sweet as chair, Peter Emo, Daniel Lynch. The Algonquins of Pickwakatagon, County of Renfrew Economic and Community Development Committee, Peter Emo as chair and Jennifer Murphy. Highway 17 Extension Advisory Committee, Peter Emo as chair, David Bennett, Kim Love, Jennifer Murphy, and Tom Peckett. For the KMP Management Advisory Committee, Robert Sweet. For the Land Division Committee, Chair Ryan Hunt, Daniel Lynch, John Reinwald, and an alternate Debbie Grills. For the Municipal Accessibility Advisory Committee, Tom Peckett. For the Ontario Small Urban Municipal Base 2019 Conference Committee, Robert Sweet as chair and Jennifer Murphy. For the Ottawa Valley Recreation Trail Advisory Committee, Robert Sweet as chair, Peter Emo, and Daniel Lynch. For appointments to external boards, committees, or agencies, for the Association of Municipalities of Ontario Board of Directors, Peter Emo. For Board of Health appointments, Michael Donahue, Peter Emo, Debbie Robinson, Janice Wizneski-Moore. Chalk River Laboratories Environmental Stewardship Council, James Bros. County-City Liaison Committee, Robert Sweet as chair, Ryan Hunt, Jennifer Murphy, and Debbie Robinson. Federation of Canadian Municipalities Standing Committees, Glenn Doncaster. Ministry of Natural Resources Forest Management Plans for Algonquin Park and Ottawa Valley Forest, Sheldon Keller. Ministry of Natural Resources Regional Advisory Committee, Sheldon Keller. Ottawa Valley Tourist Association Board of Directors, Glenn Doncaster and Kathy Rieger. Renfrew County Agricultural Economic Development Committee, David Bennett. Renfrew County Forest Re-And Wood Processing Committee, Janice Wizneski-Moore. And finally, the Shawwoods Outdoor Education Centre, Janice Wizneski-Moore. And once more, all of the above, moved by chair, seconded by committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Any comments, questions, concerns? Seeing none. All right then, I'll call for the, oh, can I have a mover, please? Can I get a mover, please? Thank you, all those in favor. Opposed, if any. Excellent. Who has bylaws? Tell us, Reinwald. Oh, you don't have the bylaws?
He doesn't have the bylaws, hold him from bylaws. I have the bylaws.
I thought you had one, sorry. Counselor Reinwald.
Thank you, Madam Warden. To all move by myself, seconded by Ashwin Ashkibor, the bylaws listed on night of the 11th, and attached here to Schedule A of the County Council, adjusted December 18, 2018, read three times and passed.
Thank you. You've heard the resolution. Any discussion? All those in favor? Thank you. Any notices of motion? None, thank you. And there are no members or commotions tonight? Only gone to new business. Counselor Love, please.
Thank you, Madam Warden. I just wanted to let the county council know that last night I got a resolution support from my council, and I will be putting my name in for Roma for Zone 6. So I'm just passing that information on to everyone. Thank you. Thank you so much for that great news, and I know that all 16 of us will do our best to support you at the conference as long as we're there. But all my best to you, Kim. I think you can make an excellent addition and serve us well. At this time, our CAO has asked me to share. Rose, I'm sure, will make sure that we all get these dates. This schedule in January is not for the faint of heart. Monday, January 7th, so our new pilot project for doubling up committee days is going to start in February. So in February, development of property and operations will be on Tuesdays. Health, social services will be on Wednesdays. Finance and admin will be on Thursdays, the second week of the month. This particular month of January, we are leaving. So, Monday, January 7th, 7th is operations. Tuesday, January 8th is development of property. Additionally, Tuesday, January 29th, 8th, at 1 o'clock will be social services. Wednesday, January 9th will be health. Monday, January 14th will be finance and admin. Wednesday, January 16th and January 17th will be council orientation. The first day is at Mairdorlini Lodge, the second day is when I share matter. Wednesday, January 33rd, 23rd and 24th are budget workshops. That second day is just in case we need it. January 27th to 29th is the Roma Conference. Wednesday, January 30th is county council. And January 29th to 31st is the EDCO Annual Conference. And if you're not tired just by listening to that, waiting till we get to the end of January, cricks over here laughing going, "Why are you doing this?" I know, it's going to be a long and busy month. So let's, let's all have a wonderful Christmas break and be ready to reconvene here in January. Is there any other new business? All right, well, once again, everyone, thank you very much. It will be my pleasure to serve as your warden for 2019. And as you know, my door is always open, and I look really forward to serving you at the Eastern Ontario Wardens Caucus. I think that we can make some great things happen this year, so thank you. Merry Christmas and Happy New Year. We have nothing enclosed. And Counselor Robinson, do you have the confirmatory bylaw?
I do, Madam Warden. Moved by myself, seconded by councillor Rose. The bylaw, according to proceedings in council, the county, where I've moved at the meeting count on December 18, 2018, will be now numbered, gave through at three times in the past.
Thank you. You've heard the motion. All those in favor? Thank you. Anybody want to go home? Who wants to adjourn this? Counselor Reinwald? Ruby, you can't vote for adjournment. I saw your hand go up. Counselor Love, all those in favor? Thanks, everyone. Have a great Christmas break.